Special meeting now then, City Council. Tuesday, July 31st, 3:20 PM. Special meeting to discuss insurance, health insurance for the full-time staff, and an update on the interim administrator status. Quite an echo. Something been changed?
I think it's turned on.
All right. And there's no allegiance or meeting policy or agenda items to discuss other than that, and no floor items. So, Mayor, you and Paul worked with staff on a proposal?
Correct, Mr. Mayor. Prior to me starting, I'd like council to look at the RCA submitted by both myself and Councilmember Rickard. And I would like two items on it taken off as they're on a separate RCA. The first is the fourth paragraph down that can be taken out, and then number four under the numbers 1, 2, 3, 4. So, history, council was presented with a RCA to increase the amount that the city contributes to the health plan for the employees. That was tabled, and then the council directed Councilmember Rickard and I to meet with the staff and talk about insurance and what they're looking for. We did meet with the staff. Prior to meeting with the staff, Councilmember Rickard and I met with Corey and Bill Singer, our agent. Mr. Singer was directed to provide us with a couple of different options as to policies available to the employees. Those options are reflected on one of the attachments. Conversation with the staff was that we were going to ask them which of the policies that were being presented was, were they in favor of, and then to let us know. The staff did let us know that they are interested in staying with the same insurance, same deductible that they currently have. In the packet is a breakdown of the existing policy. What the employee, what it costs monthly per employee, what it costs yearly per employee with the city's deduction or contribution, and then what the employee is paying after the city's contribution. The last one has two figures because of the fact of the pooling of funds that are contributed that go over and above the actual price of the premium. So, there is some overlap, and that then has been directed to the employee that has the largest premium. The second page of that-
So, let me just clarify here. So, the request at this point is to stay with the $3,600 deductible at this time to get in September to keep it, keep something in place. And for this person, their premium was $436.94 a month, and we were paying $569 a month?
Correct.
And so, their premium was only $5200 a year, and we're giving them $6800 a year.
Correct. And that difference then went to the person that had the largest premium to help buffer the cost of their premium.
All the money went into a pool, and then it was just divided out.
So, when the money went into the pool, were the premiums pooled and everybody paying a portion, or were they only being charged what was attributable to them in their particular circumstances? Was there a common rate for everybody?
Mr. Mayor, there was, to my knowledge, no one's premium dollar amount was adjusted. They all had their own based on their statistics.
But this $1,594 just deferred some of that?
It deferred some of that for the other parties, yes.
Okay. So, we didn't pool all the premiums and just divide and mique.
No, that would have not been fair to those with the smaller premiums.
Right.
Because if you look yearly, the difference. Page two is an option which was originally put forward by the city clerk, which increased our premium contribution from this $569.77 to $850. So, you've got the monthly and yearly, and we're down to one single and two families. And again, there's two different families because of the statistics within those families. The city contribution would be the same for all three, and then it shows what the employee will pay if we do the $569.77. The discussion is that we would no longer pool any additional, any money over and above what somebody's premium is, and that was basically recommended by our agent. He doesn't have any clients that do that. It's not a good way to do it. The third column over is if we were to increase our contribution to $900 a month. And so, the single employee would have coverage at 100%, and the families would have it at 20, probably 80% and 70% of the premium coverage would be taken on by the city at the 900.
And this is on which option?
We're just going to look at option one because that's the one they chose. It's what the existing have. At the time I did this, there were the three different options.
So, at the 850, the city is paying 100% of the premium?
For a single employee, yes. The family would also be 850 for each of the families. And the problem with the flat rate like that is it doesn't treat the employees equally because no matter what the statistics of their family is, they're still paying, they're still receiving the same dollar amount from the city as somebody that is a single individual.
Okay, so, the employer would get 850, and the family would get 850?
Yes.
No matter if there's-
No, no. Each employee would get $850 towards their premium, whether they have one person on it or 10. That's a flat rate.
Okay.
Yeah.
And 900, same thing?
Correct. So, the city contribution technically-
So, for this single person here-
It's really less.
They would be getting more than their premium?
Well, they wouldn't get more. We would just pay for the, we would just pay a single. So, for the employee-
You'd pay this amount up to the amount of the premium?
Yeah.
Okay. And then what were you saying about the 100% and the 80 or 70?
Well, if you look at the 850 and the 900, the percentage of what the employee is covering for that plan, such as family two, they're covering about a third of that plan. The plan itself is 16,000, and they are putting in 5816. So, it's about a third of what the total premium is. But again, the flat rate doesn't treat all of the employees equally.
Well, it does. It's just not equitable.
Equitable, okay. That's a better word, yeah.
It's a big debate at the school board yesterday. Equitable and equal are two different things. It does treat them all equally. It doesn't, but equitably, it's, they're not getting the same percentage.
Write that word down. The third page is, we look at option one, and that, what that's doing is taking and giving a percentage of the premium. Again, single, there's three options for the city to contribute, 100%, 80%, or 70%. And then the employee contributes the remainder of that. Under family, it's the same thing. Family would go down to 80%, 65%, or 55%. So, in front of us-
So, on page three, option one. So, under 100%, what am I seeing here? Oh, 100% of that one, 80% on family one and family two?
Mm-hmm.
And then the employees picking up 20%?
And then looking at the information that was previously provided by our city clerk and emailing and talking with numerous cities. As far as the city contribution for single, the majority were 100% of a single premium. The family options were anywhere between 70 and 86% of a family option. And the premium dollars that we're looking at under the options include the next year's rates as far as the increase that we were told about the 17%. So, that's included over the board on the, excuse me, on the policy.
So, the 17%, if right now, single one is, single one, is that 651 now?
For the existing employee through the end of this month, yeah.
Is it 17.7%?
The first page, under the existing policy, that's what they're paying as of today. The options is what the premium is with the increase included in it. And there's a difference between, might not come out, 17.7% because as the employee ages, their premium also increases based on age. So, even without an increase, the premium number would be different from year to year based on the aging of the employee.
This is per month on paycheck?
Correct, per month.
Number seems a little higher, but maybe that's, maybe that person's changing a category here.
Again, each year, whether there's an increase or not based on policy increases, there is an increase based on age of employee and/or dependents. So, in the conversations that Councilmember Rickard and I had, we discussed the, to discontinue the pooling of anything that is over and above what a single rate would be. And then the contribution level, we discussed 100% employee single and 80% employee family. Excuse me. It is a council decide if they want to move something different. And then what was removed from this is another, going to be another RCA on another option that was, that we learned of after the fact, that after our meeting with the employees, after the meeting with the agent, and after the meeting with the employees. There are funds available, and I didn't put dollars in because it was very fluid as to if we went 100%, 80%, 80%, 70%, you know, it just, we would have been inundated with numbers. We do know that there's money available in the general fund and the road and bridge administrative fund for insurance based on the, having budgeted for four full-time employees for the year 2018, and not having that for a good portion of the month, or good portion of the year, we were down three, down to three. And then now we're faced with having even one less for a few of the months. So, there is funding there for that. The council will though have to look, once we make a decision on our percentages or flat rate, we will have to look at what that premium cost is and build that into the budget for the remainder of 2019. Our policy goes September 1st to August 31st, so we do have to look at finding the monies for that in the 2019 budget.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Bettinger?
I'll move that we just request for council action board.
What we're doing then is we're going to continue offering the existing health insurance policy selected by the employees. The city assumes the 17.7 increase for calendar year, and actually, both are, both are assuming it because it was, the new premium is what the new premium is. We'll have to determine the funds for 2019 for August because we're at a kind of, have a time crunch for August. The current practice of pooling, pooling of funds is allowed and will include the city clerk's $569.77 for the one month to help that cushion the blow to the, to the family premiums. If the city changes its contribution rate to 100% of single premium and 80% of family premium, and that the current practice of pooling funds is discontinued as of September 1st of 2018.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Bryan?
Just wanted to be clarification. I'm just going into wording when I read the city assumes the 17%, 17.7% entry increase. That could be reading it as the city is picking up the entire cost of that increase, the full extra 17.7%. So, just wanted to make that as a point of clarification that I, as I understand it, council members, Rainville and Rickard are just saying that there will be a 20, there will be a 17.7% increase for the remainder of the year. It's actually a little higher because of different personnel as people changed. So, I just wanted to clarify that. And then that this is just going to be for the remainder of the year, or is this is going to be going forward, and we'll have to take into account the percentage changes for 2019?
This is for the current year 2018. The council then has to locate those funds for 2019. If we don't find, locate the funds for 2019, then we would have to come in and renegotiate, not with the insurance company, but amongst us and the staff. But what it does is put the onus on us to find that money in 2019.
So, I'm still a little confused by the spreadsheet. So, on the option one on page three, we have 100% paid on single employee number one, and then 80% on family one and family two. But we're saying over here, we're paying 100%. I'm not following. It should be, it should be a spreadsheet showing, here's 100% of the individual premiums. Separately, here's 80% of the family premiums.
That's, Mr. Mayor, that's what it shows. So, to look at three, you've got single, the monthly is 781.60. The yearly, that premium is 93.7920. The employee picks up 100, or the city picks up 100% of that, and then the cost is zero to the employee. If the same-
Yeah, but I'm looking at family one and family two.
Okay, all right. So, the same thing. They would be, the city would pick up 80% of that premium, and the employee would pick up 20% of that premium.
Okay, then that's not 100% of the, that's what I'm saying. The way I would look at it typically is, here's, here's the employee. Here's what we pay for the employee. Here's the family coverage. Here's 80% of that. What you're doing is you're pooling everything here, the family coverage, and you're paying 80%, which is inconsistent with the RCA.
The family coverage, those, we have two families. Each of their premiums are different. So, the monthly for family one is $1,163.50. Yearly, it's $13,962. The city is going to pay 80% of that premium, which is $11,169, and the employee pays 20% of that premium. Family two, their rates are higher. There's 80% the city's paying and 20% that the employee pays.
I'm wondering if, within the family ones, if the employees are treated singly? Is that what's going on?
Yeah. But typically, like I said, what you normally have is, here's all the employees, here's what we're paying. And if it's, in our case at work, it's 80% and 25%. So, you pay 100% of the employee and then a certain percentage of the family coverage. And what you're just saying is, is you're just taking the family coverage and taking 80% of that is what you're doing?
Yes.
I don't think that's how they were working with, that's how this works. It's just, as an employee, you're considered a family instead of individually as an employee plus our, right, Mayor?
That's how I'm understanding it. This is a lot to-
Mr. Mayor, I read it the same way you did. I thought that first column at first was 100, and then I have to, had to look at it again. The first column is basically the proposal that singles are at 100% and families are at 80%. That's how I'm reading that now? Okay.
And typically, the way you do it, you do the employee and the family differently, and I think we're, you know, it's not, in our case at work, we do 80% of the employee and 25% of the family. And in some cases, a spouse can get better coverage on the family. They say rather than to this, I'll take your 100, your 80% or 100% of yours, and I'll take the family over here. So, they can see the distinction. Right now, we've got them linked, and we're saying, well, we'll link them together and give 80%.
In theory, our, our full-time staff could each just take the single option if they so desire, and then cover their family some, in some other means is what you're saying?
Yes.
If they have that available to them.
All right. So, basically, what we're saying is, is this is what we would be willing to do through the end of the year and during a budget talks. We have to take a look at what that means going forward. And it's possible that when you get more information on this second RCA, that even yet this year, you could say that still, you know, the coverage is as good or better, and the prices are as good or better. We may want to switch to that plan. We can still do that yet this year-
Correct.
-without penalty. And at this point, if we went with this, and not to exceed the actual premium rate-
Correct.
This is, this is satisfactory for the staff?
Yes.
All right. All right, we have a motion and a second. And my understanding is it would be option one on page three, health partners, open access, $3,600 deductible, $7,200 family, and at the, when they reach the deductible, then 100% reimbursement at that point. And so, it'd be the same plan we have right now. We'd be absorbing the increase of 17.7% and switching from a fixed rate of $569.70 to a 100% premium and an 80% family. So, I have that right?
Correct. With the-
And we'd go from four employees, we were paying $27,349, to three employees will now pay $33,361.63.
Correct.
Okay.
Also, Mr. Mayor, that we will discontinue the current practice of pooling the funds, and that the city clerk's portion of the contribution will stay in the pot for this-
One more month.
One more month.
Okay. Any other discussion? Saying that, all those in favor? Aye. Opposed, motion carries.
Mr. Mayor, a second RCA associated with insurance. So, while I was calling around, while I was calling around, I found that there was another option. So, this RCA asks that the mayor and city council authorize in, I can never pronounce, in benefits group to present to us a program, to us and staff, their program. And if I can get a second?
Enoble?
Enoble, yes. For some reason, I start, try to say it on my own, I don't get it. So, if I could have a second, I would talk to them.
Second for discussion.
Okay, thank you. So, when we were talking, so last week, I sent out a little spreadsheet to everybody asking them, you know, what are your policy premiums, what a percentage you cover, some different things. And two of them responded back that they have this public employee insurance program. I wish after I heard that, I would have asked everybody that. But two of the cities that I contacted have it. One is Deep Haven. They're in their first year of it and have had, their employees were happy with the options that they were able to choose from, and have not had any problems at this point in processing any claims. The other one is Columbus. They've had it for 18 years and have not had any complaints about the coverage or plans from the employees. And in fact, their employees liked the fact that there were options. So, attached to it is an email, and it's- So attached to it is an email, and it's not in the regular email format, because when I print from home, it prints to three pages, so I cut and pasted it. But it's from this Amy, the benefits group talks about what she attached for me in regards to the, the public employee benefit, insurance program. There is a, an actual proposal for us, because that was the only way she was able to give us numbers. So there's a proposal with what the policy would cover, and the costs associated with it, there are step-by-step instructions on how to enroll, there is a listing of the medical clinics or affiliates that are covered by the policy, and then a flyer that she put about how to, how to get healthy within the plan. But it, in a quick glance, I got it at about four fifteen last night, in a quick glance, it looks like it, it offers some flexibility. I was told by our agent that this was mentioned to our city clerk, and she told them that he, they were, she wasn't interested because of the limitations of the plan. I don't know how much detail they went into on it, but I think it would be of a benefit to have somebody come out and speak to us and the staff, to see if it is something that we're, we would be interested in, what the cost savings would be. I did speak with Mr. Singer right before the meeting, and he does offer this product through the state, but he did mention that they have a twenty dollar monthly fee per employee to administer it. So it would be eighty dollars a month for us, once we are fully staffed, if four is going to be our full staff, it would be eighty dollars a month for them to administer it. So I, I would like to ask permission of council to have them, them come out, present to us and staff, and see if it is something that we can, if it's, if it, if it is a benefit to the staff. There would be no charge, if we were to change, per Mr. Singer, there is no charge to cancel our existing policy.
You know, it, it's disappointing to be sitting here on the thirty-first of the month and being told, you have no choices. In fact, we were told, if we don't make a decision by yesterday, we're in trouble. To have, have a representative like that not, and, and say he has the same tool, and never bring it up.
Well, Mr. Mayor-
And to be this late in the game going, you know, what are we going to tell staff? Oh, we're just not going to insure you?
Yeah.
You know, it puts us behind the eight ball, and it's, it's not a good place to be.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rainville.
In Mr. Singer's defense, he did bring this up to, to staff, and was told by staff that they, that person was not interested. Had he known that there were, had we asked about it at that meeting, he would have brought it up, but we didn't know about it to ask.
Yeah, but, but he should be offering, you know, what other options does he have? You know, I mean, it's the type of thing saying, here's three different items that I carry. You know, if, if you only know one, and you only ask, what are we doing right now? And you say, yeah. But if, if he's got other product, it would make sense, though, by the way, here's some other things, too, that, you know, would, would have been nice to know. And it would have been nice to know, obviously, well before the end of the month, when, you know, the, the understanding was, we have till September to do something. Well, that's when it all has to take place, but we have until the end of July to, to make a decision. So it's, that part's very disappointing. But, that being said, I think it's, it's worthwhile, I'd like to look at this, before they, you know, they can make a presentation to the, to the group, I want to make sure that, we understand what we'd be stepping into with this. But, you know, it does look like you have some life insurance, some dental, some other options here that, you know, if the, if the benefits are as good or better, and the cost are less, and you have more options as far as additional life insurance and, and additional coverages that we don't currently have, I think it's definitely worth investigating.
And, Mr. Mayor-
Councilmember Rainville.
The, from Mr. Singer's, what he told me is, he was told that they, that person was not interested in this because of the limitations of the policy, the inability to go out of network, or the, the clinics that were available to them. However, when you look at the clinics that are available, they're numerous. I, I don't, I don't not see one that isn't part of the bigger groups that offer insurance. And if you quickly look through it, it does talk about out of network, what you need to do in order to get covered out of network. You just basically have to have it pre-authorized. So there are, you know, that-
I would say eighteen years at Columbus, that is pretty well, and we certainly can, can get more information from Columbus, but, but yes, a quick, you know, and, and again, the, the staff can take a look and say, here's the ones that they're using currently, and it does look like the ones that we have certainly in our community here, look like we're covered. So I think it's worth investigating, as long as we have the staff covered currently, we can investigate something that we know will be at least as good, and potentially better, it's worth investigating, so.
So I, it, if the council chooses, then shall I look to have a presentation at the August meeting?
Or should we have a separate presentation?
We could have a separate presentation.
And when, when the staff's already here, maybe we can do something at city offices. Till midday. See if something works out.
All right, I will, if, if it's voted on by the council, I will work with councilmembers-
All right, so we, we have a motion to, so we authorize Inoval Benefits Group to make a presentation to the council and to staff, at the convenience of both. Motion and second, any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries. Yes.
I would like to thank Mary and Paul for their work, that was, it's a lot of work, and I appreciate it all.
Well, sales, I've never dealt with that many numbers, or I haven't just over a long time. And math has not always been my better suit. I'm hoping, you know, we, we did our best in trying to get something for staff that they were comfortable with, and, but I'd like to, hopefully this other option might be of even better benefit to us.
I mean, you can start throwing in some, some dental and some of the other things, life insurance and disabilities and things, that's... All right, second item was an update on the temporary or interim administrator status. From the background, I want to briefly address how we got to where we are. At the last council meeting, council authorized Dan Ryan and myself to do a search and retain a, an interim administrator, administrative person. League was contacted, and the league provided a, a list of candidates that do this type of thing for the league, or through awareness of the league. We provided that list to our attorney, to see if there's anybody, because he works with cities and, and townships around the state, to see if there's anybody they were familiar with. Two candidates came right to the top that they had worked with before. We investigated price structures and, and overall cost, contacted the, the two people that the attorneys had worked with previously. One of them decided to withdraw, decided he'd rather go to Europe than continue being in, in the immediate future, so he's going to go to Europe for a while. The other one was Bob Daris. The attorney, actually Mike Corey, had worked with Mr. Daris in the city of Avon, was extremely pleased with him, did a background check on the internet, looked at some of the other communities that Mr. Daris had worked with before, and did some background there, contacted some of the cities. Couple of things we were looking at, overall pricing, the, the range that we found and the people we contacted on the list were sixty-five to eighty-five dollars an hour. There's no benefits with that, so there's no, they take care of all taxes, insurance, things like that, so that's, that's a straight rate. We are currently under contract with Corey, if, if we do need services from Corey in the interim period, she charges a hundred and twenty-five dollars an hour. So it's more cost-effective to do it this way than continue to rely on Corey for those things. The additional understanding was, given a, a preliminary research on, on Mr. Daris as part of our city, looking at some of our meetings online, and investigating us on his own part, he felt that he could cover our, what's necessary to keep us moving forward while we search for a full-time administrative position, fifteen to twenty hours a week. He would also be available by phone. He said as long as the phone calls aren't going beyond half an hour, that would be part of his fee. If it's be more than half an hour, he'd have to put that on the bill. He would charge one way from St. Michael, actually, he's in Buffalo, it takes about half an hour, so he would charge half an hour travel time when he is in the office, but does not charge on the way home. He worked fifteen years in St. Michael, he worked seventeen years in Corcoran. The last six years, he's had his own LLC, where he's been doing this specifically, working with cities who have lost their administrative position for one reason or another, and coming in on an interim basis. Recently, he was working for the city of Dayton, I contacted the mayor of Dayton, and they were extremely pleased with his services, contacted the administrator in the city of Ramsey, who is familiar with this person as well, and said he's, spoke very highly of him. So the recommendations from people he's worked with, people that know him in the industry, came highly regarded. So Dan and I set up an interview with him last week, last Wednesday, and through that interview, liked what we discussed, and Bob wanted to meet with all the council individually as well. One of the things that can happen when you're going into a situation like this is you can have dysfunction, it makes it impossible for anybody to be successful. After meeting with all of the council members, between last Friday and, and yesterday, Monday, he does not believe we have that type of dysfunction here. He was very pleased with the interviews that he had with all the council members, he thinks everybody is looking to move forward in a positive manner and work as a team, and he would like to work with us. So I had our attorney put together a contract, as I mentioned on my way up here, just as I was leaving work, Bob Rupe sent through a modification of that, and I haven't had a chance to read it yet, but it appeared that he just added an address, a name and address for Daris Government Consulting out of Buffalo. And other than that, I do not see any changes. So the contract you have in front of you is the contract, oh, it mentioned that he changed two things. Under the signature for the mayor, he put the deputy clerk's signature to attest, and then in the first paragraph, it now reads, "This agreement made this blank day of August 2018, binding between the city of Now Then and Minnesota Municipal Corporation, located 8188 199th Avenue Northwest, Allen, Minnesota, hereafter the city, and Daris Government Consulting LLC, located 407 Halsey Avenue Northeast, Buffalo, Minnesota, 55313, hereafter Daris." So other than that, this contract is as it reads. I would like to make a motion to engage Mr. Daris per this contract, effective August first, and the length of time to be determined, the, the agreement is, when we no longer want his services, or he can no longer can be effective, we give a fourteen-day notice. Second. We have a motion and a second discussion.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Rainville.
I just, clarical question here, on page two, letter B, under five, am I just not catching what that says, or is there be something?
Yeah, there should be something after economic.
Okay. It wasn't a number, and that's all I've been looking at lately, so I just wasn't sure.
And Bob didn't correct it on this one either, so I'll get that amended. Other discussion. I'm assuming I didn't, I didn't, you know, other than Bob's comments that he thought the meetings went very well, and he was very pleased with his discussions with the council members, any, anybody on the council have anything else to say about the meetings?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Bryan.
No, I think that when we, when we had the chance to talk to Bob, he was very friendly, impersonable, seemed personable, seemed quite knowledgeable, had worked in several different-sized environments, and I would think would do a great job for us.
The anticipation is, this is likely to be a four-to-six-month engagement, but when, when we see there's no, there's no advantage to this, or when Bob sees that he's not contributing anything more, you know, he's, he's not looking for long-term prospects. If he wants to get in, do what's necessary to get out. We've got a, between the detachment, between the comp plan, between budgets, there's a lot going on right now, and he would also obviously like to help us get the right person to fill the clerk treasurer's or administrator's position, whatever the council decides there, so. He's not interested in picking that person, he's not interested in that part, but helping guide us as to what we'd be looking for to best serve the city by filling that position. Other comments. Because we just contacted him this last week, he does have some vacation scheduled, I mentioned that to Ellen, he actually would be in the office tomorrow to meet with Ellen and give her his numbers, but he has a trip scheduled to California for the first week of August here. He has two days off in the middle of August, sixteenth and seventeenth. Ellen is gone the twentieth through the twenty-fourth. You still want to go, don't you? And then, and he's also off Labor Day week for pre-scheduled trips, but he would be available by phone, and would be able to set things up prior to his departures. But he would be available by phone and would be able to set things up prior to his departures. He would likely be in the office in Ellen's absence the week she's gone. And with any clerical help, if we were able to obtain it before then. So the cost is within the budget money that we already have in place for the clerk treasurer. And I think the responsibilities are well understood. I think it's, it's interesting, because, you know, one of the problems we've had in doing reviews is we're never quite exactly sure what people are supposed to be doing every day. And I think this will help put a definition to that, because this is what this guy's done for 30-plus years. Any other discussion?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Bettinger.
Yeah, I must have had probably an hour and a half, two-hour meeting with him, and I liked a lot of things he had to say. Especially when he said our minutes, our meeting should be any longer than a half hour. It's like, please.
I said, how about an hour, he says, half hour.
Half hour, he said, yeah.
Minutes should be three pages long, mash.
And I said, I said our minutes are anywhere from 15 to 25 pages long. Three pages is what it should be. Yes.
Yeah, it would be a different approach. I think it'd be an eye-opener for all of us, so.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rainville.
And I think that's a, we can accomplish that. In the conversation we had with him, he talked about how you get to that is the work that's done prior to the council meeting and the research and the information provided. And as long as, you know, that is complete, that helps that process along. And that was one of the things he stressed, is having information provided to council, which allows them to make the appropriate decisions.
You know, I appreciated that, that he was not a person looking to jump at anything that came along. You know, when, when we first talked and I had him, you know, because he'd worked with Mike Corey before, we engaged Bob on that a little bit. And he wasn't looking for a mess, he wasn't looking for a job. You know, he was looking to turn it down if he could. And that's why he wanted to meet with everybody. And I thought that was, was wise on his part to say, you know, you guys are authorized to do the hiring, but I want to meet everybody before I even consider it. And, and the fact that he would make time on short notice to meet with everybody. And if you say you had an hour and a half, that's a chance to be pretty thorough. And I think he's, you know, he's an open book from what I could tell in the time we met with him, so. I think it'll be good for us in the interim here and help us get off to a good start in finding some, somebody full-time. And, and I think it will help Ellen sleep better at night. All right, any other discussion? All right, so all those in favor of engaging Bob Daris, actually Daris Consult, Government Consulting LLC, in terms of the contract with the minor corrections as noted? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Move to adjourn.
Meeting is adjourned. I do have, just a note that Ellen sent out. The August 8th time slot, this building is not available for a budget meeting. It was booked on March 8th or a, something, something here.
I had my calendar when we were doing the plan.
Anyway, it was a reunion, invitations were mailed, the people are coming from all over the state. So the August 8th is out. I mentioned to Ellen that we, you know, sometimes we meet downstairs. I'm not sure if we'd want to that night if there's a reunion going on up here, because it's, it was a little loud last night. But, so she sent out some other days when it's open here. I think we're probably going to have to consider meeting downstairs or seeing what else we can do. So Ellen, I'm going to ask you to send that email that you sent to me to the rest of the council. And then let's see what we can get together for another meeting date. And September 3rd is Labor Day, so that one's out. That, and then one other thing, just to bring up to speed. The detachment petition has been refiled with the state as of last week. The hearing dates continue to be September 10th, 11th, and 12th. Bob Rupe has asked that the council stick to your talking points. If the press or if the residents ask you anything, stick to the talking points. We have not been officially approached, that I'm aware of, on any issues regarding that land. We have no proposal, no concept plan that Mr. Rayslers has come to the city that we have denied him on. So there are no applications, concept plans on file that I've been told of. So I'm saying at this point, if you're, if you're going to be quoted, stick to the talking points.